One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. I have a clerk please call the roll.
Supervisor Fountain?
Here.
Look, Chofu, here. Treasure Horning?
Here.
Trustee Lebesky?
Here.
Trustee McVillan?
Here.
Trustee O'Connell?
Here.
Trustee Petrucci?
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Item number four is approval of our agenda.
So moved.
Smart.
Head out. Motion by Trustee Petrucci, support by Trustee O'Connell. Any discussion? Being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. Motion carries. Called to the public. Anybody that called to the public this evening? No one is present for called to the public. We'll move on to item number six, which is approval of our consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Clerk Shofu, support by Treasure Horning. Any discussion? Being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. Motion carries. We have five items this evening pending a new business, and seven eight is a presentation by Commissioner Nakaguri. Good evening. You have the floor?
Good evening.
And if you would like to sit or stand, whatever you're more comfortable with.
I'll stand.
Okay. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the opportunity to address the board. I sent out a report, you know, regarding my opinion on, you know, the reappointment of persons to the Board of Public Works. And I'm aware that you should have got a copy if you had taken the time to read it. This was, I wanted to come and answer any questions if there were any questions to be, you know, if you had any questions. But before we start into that, I'd kind of give you a little, you know, verbal synopsis of what was in that report. You know, I was strongly opposed to the reappointment of, there were three members. And the reason I was opposed is the financial, in short, the financial shape of the Board of Public Works, the Septic Receiving Station, you know, the, in my view, as I expressed in the report, had the Board of Public Works been paying for the REUs as they needed them over the years, you know, we wouldn't have the issue that we have today, where the county had to, I'll say, cough up the cost of all the REUs all at once. And so consequently, the Board of Public Works did not have the funds available to pay the bill. So the county loaned them some money. And so the intent for the county is to, you know, get paid back over time. There's no specific timeline. It's when they're, you know, when they're financially able to do so. But the expectation is there to, for that to, for that sum of money to be paid back. The amount of the bond that was, you know, floated was $6.2 million. In my view, a healthy sum. I made the case to, you know, that if you look at our general fund expenditures, which are in the mid $60 million, so this was a $6.2 million expenditure. So if you put that into terms, it's, in federal government terms, because who really knows what $6.2 million is? Because some people would say that's a small amount of money if you compare to what's happening in Washington, DC. But, you know, it's almost half the amount of expenditures that they spend on the, proportionally, percentage-wise, it's half the Department of Defense budget. So it's a huge sum of money. I was, didn't think it was appropriate to just reappoint the same people, given the magnitude of the financial situation. Unfortunately, my point of view didn't prevail. You know, I will still be paying attention to the budget of both the Septic Receiving Station and the Board of Public Works, who, as I know you are aware of, they, the BPW manages the Livingston Regional Sewer System. So the, I'm anticipating that there could be future financial issues. You know, I had mentioned to Mr. Luce in conversation, and I think he already knew this, that the flows in the Septic Receiving Station for the month of January were low, lower than last year. And then Mr. Luce had said it, you know, since the expansion of the Septic Receiving Station, it's, you know, it's the lowest since the expansion. You know, the volumes have never been, in my view, what was, what I was expecting. You know, in my first year on the board, I was presented with a presentation, as was all my colleagues, you know, to expand the Septic Receiving Station. For both, you know, the volumes warranted it, the projected growth warranted, and then also there were, you know, issues that, with getting fined or being charged surcharges from Genesee County wastewater treatment. So as the record shows, I voted in favor of that expansion, based on the information I had. I will say this, and I said this before, so this is not the first time I said this. That is the worst vote that I ever took. If I had to do it over again, I would not do it. And it really has galvanized me to really do my homework. Because, you know, the, while it, while the Septic Receiving Station is an enterprise fund, and I'm sure everybody here knows what enterprise fund is, you know, you're supposed to collect fees, you know, to offset the cost of providing the service. It's a fee for service. However, when things go awry, the, in our case, the county has to backstop, you know, the, provide the financial backing, which we did, which I am not happy about, but, you know, it's, but I'm willing to, we have to step up to our financial obligations. So now I characterize that vote as the worst vote that I ever took. But I also, as a little disclaimer, say that I didn't have all the information. You know, if I would have known then, what I know now, specifically, that two-thirds of the volume, you know, the Septic volume was from outside the county, I would have said, cut our volume. You know, the worst thing, in my view, having been involved in business, you want to avoid capital expenditures. And when we took on that big capital expenditure to expand the system and the debt associated with it, you can see, my analysis is that's kind of where the down, well, the financial troubles came about with the Septic Receiving Station. So, you know, the, there will be new appointments. Other, probably at the end of this year, I haven't, I don't know offhand whose terms are up, but I, I'll be looking for, you know, did we improve over the course of the year in terms of financial performance or not? And if not, I'll be advocating to, for new blood. So it's, I strongly believe we have to hold people accountable, especially for these, you know, I'll say multimillion-dollar expenditures. So with that being said, if you had any questions specific on my report, or anything, you know, SRS-wise, I'd be happy to answer them, so.
Board members, anybody have any questions?
I just want to say thank you for all your time and effort to get this, you know, to a conclusion. You were very instrumental in it, and I appreciate it. And I know the residents of Heartland appreciate it.
I appreciate the comments. I would say this, you know, why I said one of my, my worst vote was, you know, voting to approve the expansion. One of the, one of the things I'm most proud of in my, you know, six years on the board was getting Bob West appointed to the Board of Public Works. I, you know, it's, I got to know Bob over, you know, the course of time, and I got to understand that he was somebody who knew what he was talking about, you know, especially when it came to public works. I got to know Mr. West as somebody who, I've described to others as if everybody that worked in government had Bob West's attitude in terms of customer service, you know, citizen service, we would have no issues, period. And so Bob exceeded my expectations. I knew he would do a good job. He exceeded them. You know, and he, in my view, was the linchpin for digging in and finding out what was up and what was down. And so while I appreciate your thanks, I would say they really, Mr. West deserves the thanks, so.
Completely agree.
I would like to also thank him. I've been on the board since 2004. And when I came on the board, Bill, it's with me, Kathy was here, we had a problem with our agreement with the fire authority, with Tyrone Township. At that time, our representative didn't really help us out too much. Our county commissioner didn't help us out too much to try to resolve that. But when this happened, you stepped up to the plate, and you protected, to the best of your ability, the Heartland sewer users. Really like, thank you for that. And you have a lot of, probably more nervous than I have to come out here in the public. I'm glad you came out here today to explain what was happening so they understand what happened. Because now it's all public knowledge, and it's all settled, you know, largely because you stepped up to that plate and helped us. Thank you.
You're welcome. You know, I, my focus, very similar to Mr. West's focus, is just if, you know, whether you're in township government, or county government, or state government, or federal government, or whatever, if you can just focus on what's doing right by the citizens, not, you know, what's right for the county, or not what's right for the township, or what's right for the state, but just stay keenly focused on what's right for the citizens, will make the best decisions possible. And that's, you know, that is my approach. And now it was, you know, the users of the service, the Heartland Sewers, you know, by not, and I'll say this, let me take a step back. The master operating agreement, in my opinion, enabled the Septic Receiving Station to pay the rental fee. And that was a more economical decision for them to do, you know, pay the rental fee as opposed to purchasing the REUs. But then when, you know, as said in the master operating agreement, when you get to this threshold, I forget what it was, in terms of X amount of REUs left, then, you know, you have to make a decision. You know, the SRS has to make a decision. Do you want the REUs or not? And so once it got to the point of, you know, in the master operating game, we got this threshold, I think a key mistake was just dawdling around and trying to figure out, you know, are we going to buy the REUs? Or what are we going to do? And then as, you know, time lapsed, then more RE, fewer REUs were available. And, you know, they just didn't have the, well, you know what happened after that, so.
Right.
You could write a book, one could write a book about what happened. And people would be interested in reading it, so.
Well, do you know that when the Septic Receiving Station was just an idea, the commissioner went to several communities in Livingston County? And nobody wanted it in their township or city. So they came to us. And when they came to us, they were set back a little bit because they didn't have good responses from other areas. I don't know who they were. I think I know who they were, but I won't go into that. But so we decided to sit down with them and do this agreement with them. And it's basically an agreement that they proposed. And we worked it out. And then all this issue came up. And we've been trying to clear up that issue for years, not days, weeks, for years. And they wouldn't, kept putting us off until you stepped up. And I really do appreciate that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mike, could you just, for those that may be listening, just explain what the role of the township was in this? And who the, or who the, who we represented?
Absolutely.
Because this is not a general fund issue. This was
No.
the Heartland Sewer District
Yep.
issue.
Yep.
Thank you.
So as Commissioner Nakaguri said, that the, had mentioned, the crux of this was the connection, or people connected to the Livingston Regional Sewer System. This is the capacity and flow inside the Livingston Regional Sewer System. I'm not going to go too far in the weeds on capacity, flow, and all these kinds of things because we could talk for a long time on it. But that being said, the, the the discrepancy, I'll say, is over usage, capacity, and what was left available for sale for that sewer system itself. Now, the dollars that, as the commissioner had said, that were given to Heartland Township as part of the consent judgment, went directly back into connection fees. Connection fees being in the enterprise fund, which we'll talk about a little bit more here this evening. But those dollars went directly back into the connection fees portion, not into the general fund, not into being able to be used for anything but sewer usage that is built on the back of, those dollars are the back of the people that are connected to the Livingston Regional Sewer System. So this, this is either purchase the capacity or limit flow. And what it came down to eventually is the capacity that is now purchased and available for that site, that building, being the SRS. Does that kind of hit what you were?
So when you talk about capacity?
Yep.
That's the infrastructure of the pipe and the pumps and everything in the ground?
Yep.
To get our sewage pumped all the way to Genesee County?
Correct. The amount of, the amount of material sewage being dumped from one building into the sewer, the transmission line that transmits all of the septic from Heartland Township up to Genesee. Correct.
And those were paid for through bonds that were issued around 2004?
Yes. Yep.
So that's, this money that was, was part of the agreement, was, goes to the sewer fund to help pay the bonds that were initially brought out
Yes.
in 2004?
Yep.
One of those bonds?
Is callable this year.
Is callable this year?
Yep.
The other one is callable, I believe, in 30, or 2032 or 31?
Correct, Susan. 2031.
2031.
Yep.
And we have received those dollars?
We have. Yep.
I can't remember. Can you remind me what that number was?
3.616006 million.
So roughly, roughly, just over $3.6 million is now in the account
Yep.
to pay for those bonds that were purchased years ago?
Correct, to fulfill the obligation for the bonds. Yes.
And early, can you explain just briefly how people get a bill? I don't go a little bit into the weeds, but on your sewer bill, there's a line item that says capital charge.
Yep.
Everybody on the system right now gets a quarterly bill for around $16 per REU per cap for the capital charge.
Correct.
We just got, received these dollars. We're investigating what impact this $3.6 million has towards the users on the system?
Correct.
But can you explain maybe what that's going to happen here in the near future?
Yep. So that's a great point, Supervisor Fountain, that with, with the, with those dollars, the 3.6, 616 million, adding that to our connection fees, which ultimately ends up in our sewer fund, our enterprise fund, that as Supervisor Fountain mentioned, every Heartland resident that's connected to the Livingston Regional Sewer System or to a sewer hookup, not septic fields, but in actual sewer system, they currently have, on their bill, it says CC, which is capital charge. The capital charge is basically the repayment of bonds for a period of time until those bonds are callable satisfied. We have bond payments every year with interest that at the end, when they're callable, or at such a time, I should say, that they're callable, if we are able to call them, we can pay them off at that time. We will talk about this a little bit here, in a little bit, but there's a very good possibility that, right now, we have the funds to secure that bond that is callable in November of this, November of this year, Susan?
Correct.
November of this year, along with the bond that is callable in 2031. That being said, we're talking, investigating a little bit of the ability to potentially, at some point this year, have that capital charge removed from all residents' bills for the next seven years. Meaning that the entirety of the bond, until the bond is callable in 2031, the residents would not have a capital charge to pay back that bond payment until it's callable in 2031. Is that a good way to explain it, Susan?
Yep, that's a good way to explain it.
Yep. So does that
Very nice.
answer your question? So the moral of the story would be, I guess, the highlight of this would be that anyone connected to the sewer system that currently gets a sewer bill and sees that capital charge on their bill, I don't, I don't want to say with 100% certainty right now, as we sit here, that that will go away, but there's a very, very good possibility that by the end of this year, you will see that capital charge removed from their bills.
If I could interject a comment on that. You know, people have, they have paid attention to this issue, and not, I mean, this is not a very sexy issue. We're talking about crap. But, you know, they, some mistakenly look at the lawsuit as a, you know, battle between the county and Heartland Township, which I guess you could look at it that way, but really, it's, the money isn't going to Heartland Township. It's going to the, as Manager Luce said, it's going to the users of the system, who really, in my view, were getting short-changed, you know. And so that
Years.
you come up with this settlement, and it's not going into Heartland Township's pockets. It's, you know, potentially going to be used, as Manager Luce said, to offset these costs for the capital charge. And so there'll be a net dollar value improvement, you know, in terms of the people that have, that are hooked up to the sewer, so.
Yep.
Any other comments, questions?
Other than the bank didn't put a hold on that check the day we got it. So we got invested very quickly into our investment funds.
Very nice.
Yeah.
Nice.
Well, thank, thank you so much for sharing your thoughts with us this evening. If there's anything that we can do in the future, feel free to reach out, and we'll do whatever we can to continue our relationship with yourself and with the county.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, boss.
Okay, our next item, 7B, is 2025 Kraus Road Reconstruction Design Project Contract. This is with the road commission for a project that's going to be basically in the village by the post office, all the way through that intersection. For those that drive there, understand that there's a lot of work to be done. Most of it's going to be drainage. And I believe Scott Hable, is this your presentation?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you, Supervisor Fountain. So this will look familiar to some of you. We discussed this at the last board meeting. Basically, at that point in time, we did not have the actual contract in hand from the county. So we're really not making any different strides here. It's basically just to get an official signature on the contract. Because that contract wasn't provided at the last meeting, although the dollar amounts are the same, everything's the same as what was presented at the previous board meeting. But it is, this is, just to go over it real quick again, the Kraus Road project. This is just for design work for that project. And they're hoping to pencil it in this coming summer, hopefully when school's out, as we discussed before. And it's going to go from Heartland Road to East and most likely involve the intersection there at Heartland Road and Kraus. As a, I think Mike might have discussed that, just a real quick mill and fill, probably a two-inch mill and fill in that area. But then the actual section of Kraus between Heartland and East Road will be a major reconstruction project, dealing with issues that have really hurt that road in the past, including drainage. It's going to be a major component of it, so.
Thank you. And Mike, could you explain for the folks where the dollars are coming from for this project?
Yeah. And so as Director Hable said, this, just to clarify, the last, the last meeting, we saw the contract from Tetra Tech, which is Livingston County Road Commission's engineering firm. So this, this, as Director Hable said, is we approved the contract from Tetra Tech, but we're paying Livingston County to then pay Tetra Tech. That's why it's, we have it back on here for approval. So, and yes, the funding for this project is coming from what we have already budgeted in our road village budget for the last fiscal year, or this current fiscal year, with the different projects that we did, coming in under budget just a little bit, along with the Blaine Road project that, if you recall, we stopped short of the culvert as the Drain Commission is doing that culvert repair and then going to subsequently finish that paving in the next fiscal year. This freed up the dollars here to not have to do any kind of budget amendment in that line item for the year. So it's, it'll still be covered under the road village budget, so.
So this was coming from the 2014?
Correct.
Yeah, this, this isn't the current, this is still
Yes.
dollars that are from last, the last village. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions from the board? Being none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the Livingston County Road Commission contract to present, oh, to proceed with the design of Tetra Tech Engineering for a reconstruction of Kraus Road at the cost not to exceed $69,663.
And a motion by Trustee O'Connell and support by Trustee Petrucci. Any other discussion? Being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Item number 7C is Township Computers and Software Upgrade.
Thank you, Supervisor Fountain. So what we have before you this evening is, there's been, we've had talks in the past with our IT company, our IT firm, VC3. We have some upgrades coming that, to whether it be our server, our support system being Windows 10, Windows, which is moving, migrating to Windows 11, I should say. Some of the township computers are quite old and outdated. The software and the RAM and such in the computers. I am by no means a computer genius, but I can tell you that a lot of this, a lot of the components of these computers do not support the new network, along with Windows 11. That being said, we have been in talks with VC3 about this project and a server upgrade. If you recall, about a year, maybe a year and a half ago, I believe Manager West was still here at the time, we talked about the potential upgrade of our server, which we have costs on the server upgrade, the computer equipment upgrade, and the labor. This is just the equipment only, to purchase 21 new computers, of which some are towers in staff's offices, I'll say desktop computers. Some are laptops, some are, some of your tablets and/or laptops that you may have. This upgrade is done through VC3. The equipment is all ordered through them. Now, this, in speaking with VC3 in the last couple of meetings we've had with them, they can hold this price of $24,429.58 until February 24th. After that, we're anticipating an increase that, I don't want to say it's going to be, you know, $15,000, but it's going to be substantial enough that it behooves us to do this now and save the dollars on it. The installation does go up a little bit after February 24th. However, with a lead time of six to eight weeks on these computers, if we were to order them tomorrow, we're not going to realistically get them until our new fiscal year starts. So subsequently, we have budgeted for the installation, which is the labor, in our next fiscal year budget, along with the server upgrade that is in our next fiscal year budget. But tonight, what I'm seeking is approval to order the equipment, get it ordered without the actual cost increase that will come to these within the next couple of weeks. I'd be happy to answer any questions you all may have.
Any questions? Being none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the software upgrades and
I'll move to approve the software upgrades and replacements of the township all computers for an amount not to exceed $25,000 for the equipment only, and the necessary budget amendment as presented.
Second.
Motion by Clerk Shofu, support by Treasurer Horning. And Mike, we've talked about the funds for some of these different computers, but we didn't talk about the server yet. It's my understanding that the server could be purchased through PEG money?
We're.
Or are you still working on that?
Yeah, well, we're looking into it. I think possibly a portion of it, maybe all of it, we're still kind of looking at it. The big kind of caveat that we're looking at with the server is the, or the portion of the server that would host BSNA. Some communities are pushing and moving to the cloud portion of BSNA, I don't know as I'm sold on going to that cloud yet, and talking to some other communities, the cost can increase exponentially, but that, just that portion of our server is about $15,000, 14, 15? Somewhere in there?
Possibly more, I thought it was around $20,000.
And it could, or it could be, so, we're kind of working that out, which is why I see we moved into the next fiscal year, knowing that there's still maybe some components that we either need or don't need, but yes.
Yeah, so this, this portion this evening is up from the general fund?
Yes.
Purchased, okay.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? Beanon, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Item number 7D is Consumers Energy Company Gas Franchise Agreement. This is, comes up, I believe, every 30 years.
Wow.
Yep.
30 years, huh?
Brett, you will be here in about 30 years, and I guess I remember, I remember back in 2025.
Yeah, yeah, it's essentially exactly what it sounds like, so every 30 years, there's an agreement between Consumers Energy and the municipalities to be able to install, maintain, operate gas lines in right-of-way. This gives the easement and allows the easement for the next 30 years. It's fairly cut and dry, and again, the last time we did this was March 21st of 1995, so, it's hard to believe that was 30 years ago, but still.
Agreed.
What if we said no? What happens?
You'd probably be talking to the, what is it, the M?
Michigan Consumer Energy Commission or whatever.
Yeah, Public Service, MPSC, they'd probably be knocking on your door.
Yeah.
Any questions for Mike on this? Beanon, entertain a motion.
I move to approve the Consumers Energy Company Gas Franchise Ordinance and to have the clerk publish ordinance as required.
Motion by Trustee O'Connell, support by Trustee Petrucci?
No, Levesky.
Oh, I'm sorry, got the wrong ear, sorry. Any other discussion? Have the clerk please call the roll.
Trustee Petrucci?
Yes.
Treasurer Horning?
Yes.
Mr. McMullin?
Yes.
Mr. Levesky?
Yes.
Supervisor Fountain?
Yes.
Clerk Shofu?
Yes.
Trustee O'Connell?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item number 7E is Fiscal Year 2526, Heartland Township Budget Review. And I believe this evening, we're going to be going over sewer and water.
Correct.
Mike, you have the floor.
Thank you Supervisor Fountain. As always, I will touch on some key points in this, I'm going to save you all from going line by line in this, because that's what we do on a regular basis, but if you have any questions, please stop me, please ask. I will have a couple of points in here where I will have Susan jump in and shed a little light on this too, so. The beginning of this, where I would like to really start, and you see the biggest change in the second portion down of appropriations, going through and looking at 536740, which is operating supplies, that line item, you're seeing go a substantial jump from the $14,00233 to $29,945. Two different portions of that, one, we need a, the Public Works Department needs a new locator for underground utilities, those are crucial in locating water mains and everything else, that is encompassed in that line item, along with OSHA safety equipment. We have some that needs to be replaced, we have some that is outdated and some that we don't have. As everything progresses, we have different water uses and things that we need to maintain, these are safety equipments we need, or things we need as far as harnesses and things like that for maintaining certain portions of the water system. The next one down, our next two down, you'll see 536801 Contracted Services, you see a drastic drop off from the $65,000 down to, or the $65,469, I should say, down to $12,266. That is a direct reflection of the lead copper investigation that we had to do, well, it's not, I shouldn't say that, it's not lead copper anymore, it's service line investigation, because they're not calling it lead lines, they just want you to figure out what you have in your system. So, you see that drop off there, obviously, the dollar amount went down. Meter costs is one that we kind of have to hover and play with every year, that all depends on, you kind of see it go from 37 to 40 to 25 to 30. That jumps around a little bit, because as we have new construction, we have new building, we have to purchase meters, we have the meters in stock, and then the businesses come in or indoor residents come in, purchase meters from us, and it kind of is a pass-through replacement of that. So, any, any questions there? And obviously, if you look down 536826, legal fees, that went from the $29,000 down to $5,000, $5,000 is kind of a placeholder in there, we always have, the expenditure last year was the lawsuit that we went through with the water main, so you'll see drop offs there. As we move down to the next one, I want to point out to you is 536930.001, which is Repairs and Maintenance System. You will see that go from $60,000 to $50,000, and then our projected activity back up to $80,000 last year, or this, this current fiscal year. We bumped that up to 83.5, because as our system gets older, this, this is where curb box repairs, valve repairs, any, anything that happens in our system, and honestly, when you start looking at these, your system maintenance is something that, that we do on a regular basis, if it's, some of our subdivisions have an anomaly, the curb boxes are really, really far up in the yard, not right off the road, so trying to plan for those and stay ahead of that, as opposed to doing an amendment at the end of the year for it. Next one down, Repairs and Maintenance for Building and Grounds, 930.003, you see a slight increase in that, we need repairs to heaters in the water plant, the water plant heaters, we have one and kind of a half that are functioning right now, so a slight increase in that. And then, the next one down that you'll see that will correlate, and I'm going to allow Susan to elaborate on this a little bit, is 536999539, which is a Transfer to Water Replacement Fund, that's a reflection from 536 to our 539, and I will let Susan elaborate on that a little bit.
Yeah, so that's, sure, so that's a, should have been $100,000, not $300,000, but that kind of brings up a broader discussion we should have, maybe through a workshop or something, on the projections that we have in-house for future development and who's coming online, you know, only, you know, actual site plans that have numbers to them, how many REUs, sewer and water do they have, when do we think they're going to need to buy REUs, if they need to buy REUs, when do we think they're going to come online? And from the sewer funds perspective, it's a, it's kind of a race right at the moment between buying REUs and Scott's crew with their rubber band and duct tape, keeping everything together in a fabulous manner, but it's a race between people buying REUs and us needing to spend money from 536 into, you know, moving, it's all one fund, but it's undesigned money into basically the capital 539, and eventually, we are going to have to bond for some major improvements and repairs to the system, and so that'll be something that we spend our time on this summer, taking a really deep dive at, looking at over a long-term period. And Mike, I in fact had a meeting with Stephen Burke, who is our municipal finance advisor, he works with me on our annual disclosures, he also works with us when we go out for bonds, and assists in the whole process of putting together a bond package and doing some short-term and long-term, you know, financial analyses, we work together on those, and so we'll be plugging in the whole crew to, and it probably is a, I would recommend, you know, and that we have a workshop on, you know, where do we looking like right now, in terms of buying, you know, who's going to buy REUs, who's going to come on, and can, will we have enough money to make those improvements that we need to, or, and the timing of going out for bonds? So, it should only be $100,000, but it kind of is a good time to, just to, yes, to basically talk that through with the board, if, this is sort of a moving, moving number, right?
Yes, Susan, so, in the 539 account, you do, it is right there where it says 100?
Yes, that's correct.
In that 530, .536 line, that, so that's the 100,000, which is that?
That's correct, yeah, that's over on the revenue side.
Yeah.
539 shows that transfer in, this transfer out should be only $100,000 for the, you know, next fiscal year, and, but again, as I say, it kind of depends on when, the timing of repairs, we've had some big ones, and we've got some big projects that, and I don't think that we've got attached to this, just as a reminder, the capital plan that we have that we went over last meeting, but there's some significant things that have to get done.
And it's a, a good point that, you know, Susan just kind of mentioned, at some point, we will host a workshop on this and talk about, I don't want to, you know, go too far into the weeds so you all get really, really sleepy here, but, but it's something that we need to talk about of how staff has already put together, we've already met numerous times and projected out the next three years, five years, what we think these developments are going to happen, and when we think they're actually going to start to build and construct, and how many will be added. The anomaly you see here, and we've talked about this before, is that this can be a direct reflection of the purchase of REUs for connections to our system. So, if we have a development that comes in, and it's 100 homes or 101 homes, as they build these houses, they get a land use permit for each individual lot, each individual home. That home's REU is purchased with that land use permit for that one home, not in a lump sum of 100. So, when you look at it, it's, it's the cost of the REU that they're trickling in for that to, into this fund, as opposed to one lump sum of purchase. Now, when you look at a large-scale building, let's say, it, some of the developments that have a 12-unit condo complex or whatever would be, that one, they're purchasing the amount of REUs for that building, that's a little bit bigger of a lump sum than one at a time. So, as we progress forward, we have a lot in the barrel for planning when it comes to development and housing and everything else, but as they come forward, the REU purchases will just kind of trickle in as opposed to a lump sum come in. Does that make sense to everyone? Okay. All right, and then, moving on, from, anyone have any questions on water?
So, budget time's coming up quickly, is this something that's going to go on and pass our next budget? What Susan just talked about?
Yep.
We're not going to have all this information in the next six weeks.
We are not.
I didn't think so.
No. No. This will be a summertime project.
Yeah, this will be a workshop.
Yeah, not, not before you have to adopt the budget.
No.
No, don't you, I don't know, is that a problem, or you want it done in six weeks? Because we can hire people.
Just checking in.
Okay, so, moving on to 590, which is sewer fund, not a lot to, of change in any of the funds, with the exception of 590602, which is about midway down in that first section. You see the amended budget for $188,780, and that jumps to $3,666,223.
Oh, that's beautiful.
That is.
That is beautiful.
That is where the 3.616 million from the settlement from the county, the consent judgment payment, was added to connection fees. Again, as you go down to the bottom of that page, direct reflection being the $3,171,000 to the 6.6 million or six. So, as we had mentioned, there's, there's a definite possibility, and I guess I just not ready to say it right this second, but there's a definite possibility that this year, at some point, we would see those capital charges fall off as we've collected enough to secure and make those bond payments, along with pay off the bonds when they are callable. So, another to note is the Subsidy Receiving Station fees are eliminated, meaning the hosting fee, the penny per gallon that we did receive, that's no longer in play per the agreement with this payment, however, I will say, their RTS, which is Readiness to Serve fee, goes from the 217 REUs to the 650 REUs, so there's a drastic change in that RTS billing as well. Any other highlights that I'm missing, Susan? I don't believe so.
No, I don't think so, you hit on the, you hit the high points, the capital charges and the elimination of the Subsidy Receiving Station revenues.
So, Mike, just for clarification purposes, for those that may be watching, roughly how many sewer taps did Heartland Township get with the sewer system that, you know, for, was it around 6,300?
Yeah.
Just, plus.
Ballpark it, yeah.
Ballpark it, 63 to 6400?
Yep.
And to put that in relationship to how many sewer REUs the SRS uses?
Correct.
Is 650 is what they currently own?
Correct.
So, if you were to translate that into uses for an average house, it's roughly 650 houses worth of?
650 single-family homes.
Single-family homes are being processed through that plan?
Correct.
Okay. Which is 10%, of the system?
Correct. One, one thing that I would like to clarify in this as well, is the addition of, I'm going to try to word this to not make it confusing, but the addition of the REUs that the Subsidy Receiving Station received were not purchased from Heartland Township, they were purchased from Genesee County in Tyrone Township and added to the Heartland Sewer System, so it was not capacity purchased from Heartland, to clarify that. So, but yes, it, it is, it's with the total allotment, and basically, the total allotment that you spoke of Supervisor Fountain, is essentially, when Heartland Township is completely built out, the amount of connections, when we talk in REU, a single business can have multiple REUs, but a single-family home has one. have multiple REUs, but a single-family home has one. So that being said, when Heartland Township is completely built out, we are allowed to send, and again, I apologize, I don't remember exactly off the top of my head what that number is, but let's say 60, 260, whatever it would be. REUs total is what we can send in flow from Heartland Township up to Genesee County, okay? Once we reach that threshold, that's where the development stops and/or you expand plants and you expand sewer systems. I shouldn't say development stops, that's not where, the right, correct term, but that's where we reach our limit. So you're exactly right, that, that, that over-usage would take away from what our capacity in our system was. But that kind of answers your question, so. And then, obviously, you know, really the other increases are very nominal increases of percentages or something like that, as, as these things increase, supplies and postage. We all know that postage goes up every year, but nothing really that's notable or noteworthy other than what I've addressed already this evening. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions you all may have for myself, for Susan, however.
I might have a question, probably for Susan. The uncollectible UB fees, $9,054?
That's from the one parcel that we sent to the Winter Tax Roll.
Oh, yeah, okay, okay.
And we had to eat that.
Yep.
I'm just going to make a couple of comments on the expenses. One of the bigger increases is regarding, you know, the LRSS, the contract services that we have to do.
I see that.
And that's because we now have to pay them for the
431
431 REUs on their bill.
Yep.
Right, so that's
But they're going to pay us higher.
They're going to pay
RTS.
Yeah, they're, they're, you know, with a little extra to it. So we have to pay them, you know, when we get their bill, they now are going to include that, those extra 431 REUs on their bill. So that's why that's gone up. So there's a bit of a flow increase there, assumed, but plus, you know, we have to pay them, you know, on those 431 REUs. We're billing them, but we also have to pay them. So we're going to see, you know, a little increase in revenues, but also an increase in expenses, plus an assumed increase in flow rates. And then the other point I wanted to make is, you'll see down on the very last line, Transfer to Sewer Expansion Bond Fund, a little over $3 million, 3.4 million, that we will transfer next year in, to, from 590 into 595. Yes, it's all one great big fund, but we'll, we'll make that transfer over to make our required bond payments plus call the 2016 bond. And at that time, we, obviously, so that's a, that's the total number of bond payments that we have next year, including that, the amount of the call. And then the following year, it goes down to only 700 and
$90,000.
$90,000.
There's no action this evening, correct? This is for information, and it will be, it's a part of our overall budget discussion, I believe, in about a month.
Correct.
Okay?
Yep.
Any other final questions? Being none, we'll move on to board reports, and we are in our first meeting, and we have Trustee Levesky.
No report.
Trustee McMullin?
No report.
Trustee Petrucci?
No report.
Clerk Shoefu?
Just a little update on the Winterfest, Winterfest event that was held last Saturday was very, very successful. There was white stuff all over. You actually could sled, you could do, you'd do a lot of things. It went extremely well. We went through a ton of smores, a huge amount of cookies. But I do really need to thank our sponsors that really make this thing work. There are a list of businesses that you'll see on the website, but I'd like to just specifically mention our major sponsors. Our crystal sponsor was Athletico Physical Therapy. Our bronze sponsors were Planet Fitness, Mexican Fiesta, Heartland Lions Club, silver sponsors of Serene Gardens, Mrs. Michaels Plumbers Electrical and HVAC Technicians, I promised her I would tell you that, the Majestic Lake Walden and Cro-Maine Library, and our platinum sponsors of Pioneer Cabinetry, Heartland Insurance, and Priest Companies, who once again has been sponsoring our fireworks for many, many years, and we appreciate all of their, all of our sponsors for this event, it wouldn't happen without them. There are a long list of contributing sponsors that helped out with concession stands and other items, and there were a decent set of volunteers that we have that I'd also like to thank. Those will be listed on our website. And I'd just like to pass a special thanks to Deputy Clerk Heather Cosgrove and our receptionist, Election Assistant Casey Lewis. They really were the individuals that put all the details together to get this thing running. So again, it was a very successful event, and we are already starting to plan for 2026.
Very good. Congratulations on the snow.
That was my doing.
Treasurer Horning?
The county and I did a trial, trial balance on the summer and winter roll today, and the two of us are all in balance, which is a lovely feeling. And so we're ready to rock and roll, our last, you know, we're going to, just be through the 28th. Our office will be open on Friday, February 28th, just the Treasurers Department, from nine to five, because that is the last day of tax collection.
Very good, thank you. And Trustee O'Connell?
No report.
I have nothing this evening. We will go into brief recess, and then our discussion this evening is Managers Report and Fiscal Year 2526 Employee Merit Discussion. So we will go into a brief recess. And we are back. Mike, you have the floor.